Welcome to the second Ryan White Planning Council hearing for 2020. And keeping with best practices for social distancing to slow the spread of COVID-19 coronavirus. The public hearing was pre-recorded online through Zoom. If you would like a copy of the information being presented this evening, you can view and download the documents from our website, RWPCHouston.org. My name is Veronica Ardoine. I am one of the co-chairs of the Affected Community Committee of the Ryan White Planning Council. Also with us this evening is my co-chair Rodney Mills, the Chair of the Ryan White Planning Council, Tana Pradia, the co-chairs of the Priority Allocation Committee, Bobby Cruz and Alan Murray, and Tori Williams liaison to the County Judge Nina Eldago. For the first topic tonight, there will be an updated presentation on COVID-19 and living with HIV by clinical consultant Pete Rodriguez. Please note that this presentation is also available in Spanish on our website, RWPCHouston.org. Next, Bobby and Alan from Priority and Allocation Committee will give an overview of their committee's processes and their recommendations for the fiscal year 2021, priority rankings, and funding allocation services categories funded by Ryan White Part A Minority AIDS Initiative, which is also referred to as MAI, Part B, and State Services Grants. The allocations recommendations include level, increased, and decreased funding scenarios. Remember that everything discussed this evening will not affect how services are delivered now, but will affect how services will be delivered approximately 10 months from now in the year 2021 and 2022. After the presentations, my co-chair Rodney Mills will give instructions on how to make public comment regarding information presented today. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to the Chair of the Planning Council, Tana Pradia, who will describe the role of the Planning Council and the purpose of this public hearing.
Thank you so much Veronica. Good evening everyone and welcome. I would like to briefly describe the history of the Planning Council, what it is that we do, and why we are here tonight. The Ryan White Program is the largest federal program focused exclusively on HIV care for those who do not have sufficient healthcare coverage or financial resources for meeting the challenges of HIV disease. Ryan White fills the gaps in care that are not covered by other sources. The federal legislation is known as the Ryan White HIV AIDS Treatment Extension Act of 2009. It was first enacted in 1990 as the Ryan White Care Act and has been amended and reauthorized four times in 1996, 2000, 2006, and 2009, adjusting with each reauthorization to accommodate new and emerging needs such as increased emphasis on providing life-saving and life-extending medical services for people living with HIV. The Ryan White Program works with cities, states, and local community-based organizations to provide HIV-related services to more than half a million people each year. There are several parts within the Ryan White Program, each one designed to meet the needs of different communities and populations affected by HIV. Part A funds are designated to serve metropolitan areas and are awarded to the chief executive official primarily responsible for providing healthcare in the geographic region. In the Houston-eligible metropolitan area, that person is Harris County Judge Lena Eldago. In 2019, Harris County received approximately $24 million to provide services for people with HIV throughout the six county area, namely Harris, Fort Bend, Waller, Liberty, Chambers, and Montgomery Counties. Part B funds are awarded directly to the state of Texas and are used to provide care for people with HIV in a 10-county area, which includes the six counties named previously in Austin, Colorado, Waller, and Walton Counties. In 2007, the state asked the Houston Ryan White Planning Council to make recommendations for Part B and State Service Funds. Since they are already responsible for allocating Part A funds in fiscal year 2019, Ryan White Part A, Part B, and State Service Dollars totaled more than $29 million. Again, Congress requires that most of these funds be used to provide medical services for people living with HIV in the 10-county area. Currently, approximately 14,000 individuals out of 29,000 people living with HIV in our area are using our Ryan White-funded services. By law, the council is charged with determining the number of individuals in our area who are living with HIV, assessing the needs of the HIV community, establishing a comprehensive service plan, setting service priorities and allocating funds, assuring there are sufficient services to meet the future needs of the changing epidemic, assuring that appropriate services are available to meet the needs of the underserved women, infants, children, and youth, ensuring access to services for those who have substance abuse treatment needs, and assessing the administrative mechanism which procures services and abuses funds. The Planning Council falls under the Texas Meeting Act and its processes are open to the public at all levels. We strongly encourage participation by all members of the community and take public comment and input very seriously. The council normally meets on the second Thursday of every month at noon at the Harris County Annex 83 located in the Galleria area at 2223 West Loop South between West Hamer and San Philippe. Currently, meetings are being held by Zoom video conferencing. For more information and to participate in the Zoom meetings, please call 832-927-7926, or you can visit us on the web at RWPCHouston.org. This information will be repeated for you at the end of the program. It is important to remember that Ryan White Funds are the funds of last resort. This means that all other resources for individuals must be exhausted or unavailable before Ryan White Funds can be used. For example, a person must use their private insurance, Medicaid, or Medicare benefits before they are eligible to have Ryan White money paid for primary care. There are also income eligibility requirements that govern the use of Ryan White Funds. Many of these services that we provide have an income cap of 300% of the federal poverty guidelines, which means that an individual with a yearly income of $38,280 or less would be eligible for assistance, provided all other avenues of coverage have been exhausted. The same guidelines apply to a single parent with one child, would be $51,720 or less. Examples of some of the services which Ryan White Program Funds are allowed to provide include outpatient, primary medical care, medications, dental care, mental health services, and assistance to pay for health insurance premiums, copays, and deductibles. The purpose of this public hearing is to inform the community about the recommended service priorities and funded allocations for fiscal year 2020. In order to get feedback from consumers of Ryan White Program services and others, community input is not only necessary, it is vital to all the Planning Council processes. And it is encouraged at every level. The service category rankings and allocations that will be reviewed this evening include services funded by Ryan White Part A, MAI, Part B, and the Texas Department of Health Services. At this time, I would love to introduce our next speaker, Pete Rodriguez, a registered nurse specializing in HIV care and a clinical consultant by HERSA HIV AIDS Bureau, who will present updated information about COVID-19 and living with HIV.
Thank you, Tana. Thank you for that introduction. Tonight, I'm going to talk about coronavirus, COVID-19, and living with HIV. I'm going to give a brief overview of the virus. What is it? Symptoms and treatment, transmission and prevention, and living with HIV and COVID-19. Next slide, please. What is COVID-19? COVID-19 is a new illness that affects your lungs and your airways and is caused by a virus that is spread in droplets from the mouth and nose when you cough or breathe out, touching contaminated surfaces and then touching your face. And that's really important, touching your face. Having close contact with someone with COVID-19 and breathing in the droplets that are exhaled by them. Next slide, please. Such as when somebody's coughing and they cough and you're nearby them. That's a good way to catch this particular virus. Here in Texas, there have been 93,206 cases reported, and of those cases, we've had approximately 2,000 fatalities here. As you can see by this slide here in Harris County, and this data is from June 15th of this year. Harris County, we've had about 17,000 cases. In Dallas, about 14,000. You scroll down to Fort Bend County and you can see we've had about 2,400 cases there. Missouri County has had about 1,700 cases. Next slide, please. Worldwide, we've had almost eight million cases. And of those eight million cases, there have been about 434 deaths. Here in the United States, we've had over 2 million cases of COVID-19, about 115 deaths. And again, this information is from June 16th of 2020. Here in Harris County, among the populations or different populations, about 3% are Asian, black, about 19%, Hispanic about 30%. And you can see we have about 30% that are unknown. That means the data hasn't been collected as to what particular ethnic group they belong to. And it's split pretty evenly between men and women. Next slide, please. What are the common symptoms of COVID-19? It's usually a very dry, continuous cough, fever, when your face feels really hot, tiredness, sore throat, achy, runny nose. And one of the symptoms that they're seeing as well is a lack of taste or a lack of smell. And the thing that's scariest about this particular virus is sometimes there are no symptoms. People can be infected with COVID-19, have no symptoms, and still pass it on to other people. Next slide, please. So what can you do to prevent COVID-19? The most important thing to do is to wash your hands because if you were to touch something that's infected with a virus and then you touch your hands, you have just put that virus near your mouth, your nose, and your eyes, which is the way that the virus enters your body. So again, avoid touching your face, your eyes, and your nose, or a face mask. And the face mask is to also protect you. If you touch your face, you don't put that virus directly on it, you're putting it directly on the mask. Stay about six feet away from somebody, which is about two arm lengths out. Cough or sneeze into a tissue. If you don't have a tissue, use that elbow. And again, if you're not feeling well, stay home and call your healthcare provider. Next slide, please. So what happens if you have COVID-19 symptoms? What if you start feeling really bad? You start running a fever. Number one, of course, is stay home and call your local healthcare provider. If you are diagnosed with COVID-19 or you're feeling bad and waiting for those results, stay away from other people. Ask your friends or neighbors to leave your supplies outside your house, and it's best that they don't come in. If you live with somebody who is vulnerable to this particular infection, let's say if you live with somebody who's elderly, who's diabetic, who has high blood pressure, it's best to stay away from them and move away if possible, or stay away from these people. Manage symptoms like you would the flu at home if possible. Rest, drink plenty of fluids. If your symptoms don't improve after seven days, or if you have a really bad cough, you cannot catch your breath, you stand up to walk, and you feel like you're going to pass out, call your doctor immediately because you may be needing to go to the hospital. Next slide, please. Now, preparing for COVID-19 if you're living with HIV. Of course, follow the general precautions as everybody else. It's really important to take your HIV medications. This is not a time for taking HIV medications to stop your treatments. Make sure you have a good supply, at least a 30-day supply. Ideally, you have a three-month supply. If you have any problems getting that HIV medication from your provider, call the clinic, ask to speak to the pharmacist, ask to speak to the director, but make sure you have a supply. This is not a time for you to interrupt treatment. Make sure your immunizations are up to date, especially the flu vaccine. And if you're over 50, get that pneumonia vaccine. That's extremely important right now because you don't need to come down with the flu and pneumonia and the COVID-19. Please remember to take your vaccines and remind your friends to do it as well. Have a plan in place in case you do get sick. If you're having to work, let's say you're working in a grocery store, you're working a lot of people, and you're really exposed to this virus, have a plan in place in case you have to stay home. And right now, of course, look after yourself. Eat well, exercise, and look after your mental health. Next slide, please. Right now, what of course everybody's saying is the social distance. Social distance means stay at home, don't be going out to restaurants, don't be meeting with your friends. Well, that's what we call social distancing. We don't want to socially isolate. Next slide, please. By socially isolating, that means that you can still talk to people on the phone, you can still interact with them on Facebook, but it's really important that you don't socially isolate. Because if you socially isolate yourself, there's increased risk of early death from socially isolating, decreased immunity, increased inflammation, which is really important because if you get COVID-19, you're going to have this major increase in inflammation in your body to fight the infection. But if you already haven't increased inflammation, it's going to work against you. When you socially isolate, it affects your health as much as smoking 15 cigarettes a day or misusing or abusing alcohol. So what do you do to combat social isolation? Create a regular routine. Get up, take your shower, do like you regularly do, get up at a regular time, eat healthy meals. I know it's really hard if you're having to socially isolate, but do your best to get some good fresh vegetables and fruit. Exercise. Exercising outside is okay. You can even go with another person, just keep your social distancing, wear a mask, but get some good fresh air, get outside, and get some exercise. Get plenty of rest, stay connected again through the phone or those video calls. Foster and adopt a new animal. You know, you'd be surprised how good that makes you feel to have a new animal inside the house, kitten or cat. Take up a new hobby. Look for humor. Don't be looking at all the downer news all the time. It's really easy. The news is 24/7 and it's not uplifting news right now. So look for some humor, get some good humorous movies on there, and try to stay positive. Next slide, please. It's really important to stay up to date on all that's going on. And these are two great resources. The Public Health Department has a great website. So does the Houston Health Department. They have great websites. And the thing about this particular virus is we're getting new information every single day about this virus, and it's really, really important. You know, if you've been reading the news lately, methadone is the latest drug that they're starting to use, and that's something that some patients are already taking. So it's stay on top of the news, get all the information you can, and you can do it. We can get through this pandemic. Now, I'd like to introduce Bobby Cruz and Alan Murray, who are co-chairs of the Priority and Allocation Committee, who will now explain the committee's process and present the proposed service category, priority rankings, and allocations for fiscal year 2021. Bobby?
Thank you, Pete, for that COVID-19 presentation. Good evening, everyone. Every year, the Priority and Allocation Committee discusses how we can adjust the service allocations to meet the changing needs of our community. Annually, in April and May, the Quality Improvement Committee considers many facts when reviewing the definition of each Ryan White-funded service category. When the Quality Improvement Committee changes what is offered through a service, they make their changes based upon facts, such as documented needs of various populations living with HIV in the greater Houston area, history of service usage, epidemiological trends, and the availability of alternative resources, including both Ryan White and non-Ryan White Funds. Once the service category definitions are approved, it is time for the Priority and Allocation Committee to prioritize the individual service categories and allocate monies to each one. The mechanism for awarding Ryan White Funds changed in 2014, and we are now seeing southern parts of the country, such as the Houston-eligible metropolitan area, receive higher grant awards, while areas like San Francisco and New York are experiencing significant decreases in their reward amounts. Starting in 2015, the Houston area received an increase every year except one, where we received a small decrease. This is good news for Houston area, but some would say that we have been underfunded for many years, and we now have the opportunity to catch up with the growing number of people who need our services. In recent years, a significant factor in determining the allocation of funds to individual service categories has been the availability of private health insurance offered through the Affordable Care Act. There are currently over 5,300 clients registered in the Ryan White system that are enrolled in either public or private health insurance. The anticipated result is that there will be a reduction in the use of Ryan White-funded medical services and an increase in the number of clients needing help through the Ryan White Health Insurance Assistance Program. Similarly, the COVID-19 pandemic has greatly increased the rate of unemployment, which may prompt an increase in the number of individuals seeking Ryan White-funded medical services due to a loss of health insurance coverage. In addition to our Ryan White Grant, Houston also receives Minority AIDS Initiative, or MAI, funds. The goal of the Minority AIDS Initiative is to address racial and ethnic disparities in HIV-related health outcomes and expand community-based capacity to serve people of color living with HIV. The proposed service priority rankings and allocation discussed tonight are for fiscal year 2021, which begins on March 1st, 2021, and includes the following funding streams: Ryan White Part A, MAI, Part B, and State Services. The proposed service priority rankings for 2021 are based primarily on use and need as documented in the 2020 Houston HIV Care Services Needs Assessment. The fiscal year 2021 allocations are based primarily on fiscal year 2019 expenditures, final allocations for fiscal year 2020, and the anticipated number of clients utilizing Ryan White-funded services, including those who enroll in private insurance that need assistance paying premiums, copays, and deductibles. Currently, there are approximately 14,000 people living with HIV in the Houston area who rely on Ryan White Funds to pay for some or all of their HIV-related medical care. Please note that the new needs assessment report was completed prior to the outbreak of the coronavirus. I will now present the service priorities and the first of three different funding scenarios. The level funding scenario, which assumes we will receive the same amount of funding in 2021 as we did this year. Detailed information about the level funding scenario or about all three funding scenarios is included in the information packet which is available on our website. The first 11 service categories are defined by the federal government as core medical services. And the legislation requires that we spend at least 75% of our grant funds on direct medical care for Ryan White clients. The remaining 25% can be spent on support services, such as transportation, to medical appointments, service linkage, and more. The Houston area typically spends 80% of our Ryan White Funds on core medical services for Ryan White clients. The recommended allocations for 2021 are the same as in 2020 unless otherwise noted. Here are the priorities. Priority number one: ambulatory outpatient medical care. The proposed allocation for Part A is $10,965,788 plus $2,2,859 in Minority AIDS Initiative Funds for a total allocation of $12,968,647. This is an increase of $879,962 to accommodate the projected increased usage due to COVID-19-related unemployment and the HIV epidemic initiative. Priority number two: medical case management. The proposed allocation for Part A is $1,730,000 plus $320,100 in Minority AIDS Initiative Funds for a total allocation of $250,100. This is a decrease of $385,802 due to underspending and allows the administrative agent to determine which subcategories are reduced given consideration to the MAI allocations as well as any fiscal year 2020 final quarter adjustments to the service category. Priority number three: local pharmacy assistance program. The proposed allocation for Part A is $1,810,360. This is a decrease of $300,000 due to underspending in fiscal year 2019. Priority number four: oral health. The proposed allocation for Part A is $166,404 The proposed allocation for Part A is $166,404 and the proposed allocation for Part B is $2,218,878 for a total allocation of $2385,282. Priority number five, health insurance premium and cost-sharing assistance program. The proposed allocation for Part A is $1,383,137. For Part B, it is $1,028,433. For state services, it is $853,137. And for state rebate, it is $136,918 for a total allocation of $3,401,625. Priority number six, mental health services. The proposed allocation for state services is $300,000. Priority number seven, early intervention services. The proposed allocation for state services is $175,000. Priority number eight, medical nutritional therapy. The proposed allocation for Part A is $341,395. Priority number nine, home and community-based health services. The proposed allocation for Part B is $113,315. Priority number 10, substance abuse treatment. The proposed allocation for Part A is $45,677. Priority number 11, hospice services. The proposed allocation for state services is $259,832. I will now turn over to my co-chair, Alan, who will present the allocations for non-core services as well as the increase and decrease scenarios for fiscal year 2021.
Thank you, Bobby. Good evening, everyone. The remaining service categories are defined by the federal government as non-core or supportive services. Priority number 12, referral for healthcare and support services. The proposed allocation for state rebate funding is $450,000. This is an increase of $75,000 to support an AGAP enrollment worker at one additional clinic. Priority number 13, non-medical case management. The proposed allocation for Part A is $1,267,200. And the proposed allocation for state services is $350,000. For a total allocation of $1,617,200. This is a decrease of $57,000 in Part A due to budget shortfall. Priority number 14, transportation. The proposed allocation for Part A is $424,911. This includes bus passes, van service, gas vouchers for those living in rural areas. Priority number 15, emergency financial assistance. The proposed Part A allocation for the pharmacy assistance subcategory is $1,545,439. This is an increase of $780,439 due to increased expenditure in fiscal year 19 and in light of unemployment resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. And $240,000 to fund the new other subcategory, which will provide one-time, short-term emergency food, telephone, and utility. Priority number 16, linguistic services. The proposed allocation for state services is $68,000. Priority number 17, outreach services, primary care, retention and care. The proposed allocation for Part A is $420,000. The fiscal year 2021 service dollar allocation total is $30,973,565 under this level funding scenario. Because the exact amount of Ryan White funds we will receive in 2021 is not yet known, we also have a decreased funding scenario and an increased funding scenario, each of which is designed to best meet the needs of the community under these different circumstances. The funding scenarios are also included in the information packet on our website. If the Minority AIDS Initiative were to get a decrease in funding next year, all primary care subcategories would be decreased by the same percentage. This applies to the total amount of MAI service dollars available. If the Minority AIDS Initiative were to get an increase in funding next year, all primary care subcategories would be increased by the same percentage. This applies to the total amount of MAI service dollars available. If Part A were to get a decrease in funding next year, all service categories except subcategories 1G pediatric primary care, 2H pediatric medical case management, 2I medical case management for veterans, and 2J medical case management for youth, and 10 outpatient substance abuse treatment would be decreased by the same percentage. This applies to the total amount of Part A service dollars available. If Part A were to get an increase in funding next year, allocate the first $200,000 to medical case management and allow the administrative agent to determine which subcategories it goes to, giving consideration to the MAI allocation as well as any fiscal year 2020 final quarter adjustments to the service category. Allocate the next $100,000 to the health insurance assistance program and allocate the next $100,000 to local pharmacy assistance program untargeted. Any remaining increase in funds will be allocated by the Ryan White Planning Council with prioritization given to new programs. If Part B state services were to get a decrease in funding next year, a decrease in funds of any amount will be allocated by the Ryan White Planning Council after the notice of grant award is received. If Part B in state services were to get an increase in funding next year, I'll allocate the first $200,000 to oral health untargeted, divided evenly between the general oral health and prosthetic subcategory. Allocate the next $200,000 to the health insurance assistance program. Any remaining increased funds will be allocated by the Ryan White Planning Council after the notice of grant award is received. Many volunteer hours were devoted to this challenging work. We generously thank all the community members who worked so hard to fine-tune each service category, prioritize the services, and allocate the funds. Public input is strongly encouraged and is an integral part of this process. Depending on the comments made regarding the information presented at this hearing, the Priority and Allocations Committee may be at 2:00 PM on Wednesday, July 1st, to discuss whether the comments provide enough data to justify changes in recommended priorities and allocate. I will now turn the meeting over to Rodney Mills, co-chair of the Better Community Committee, who will explain the process for submitting a public comment regarding the information presented at this public hearing.
Thank you, Bobby and Alan. And a very special thanks to the Priorities and Allocations Committee for their hard work this year. After hearing the information presented, you may want to give a public comment to the planning council. The planning council files under the Texas Open Meetings Act, and this process is open to the public at all levels. We strongly encourage participation to all of the community and take public comment and input very seriously. There are several options for you to provide public comment to the planning council. There are several ways you can provide. You can email your comments to feedback rwpc@hct.net. You can fax your comments to 713-527-3740. Or you can call in your comments to 832-927-7926. Or you can send your comments through our Facebook page, RWPC Houston. Comments must be received in our office for 12 noon on Tuesday, June 30th. Comments will be forwarded to the Priorities and Allocations Committee for review and consideration. If significant comments related to surporting or allocations are received, the Priorities and Allocations Committee will meet via Zoom at 2:00 PM on July 1st, review comments and consider revising the recommendations. On July 2nd and July 9th, the steering committee and planning council will review and vote on fiscal year 2021 service priorities and funding allocation. You are welcome to attend any of these virtual meetings. Check out our website calendar for instructions on how to participate via Zoom or call our office at 832-927-7926. At this time, I would like to turn your attention back to Veronica.
Thank you, Rod. This concludes the final Ryan White Planning Council public hearing for 2020. If you would like, I would like to thank everyone who viewed the program for participating in this important process. As stated earlier, everything discussed tonight will not affect how services are delivered now, but will impact how services are delivered approximately 10 months from now in the year 2021. Ryan White Planning Council meets on the second Thursday of every month at noon. Please check the calendar on our website, rwpchouston.org for the location of meetings as currently they are being held on Zoom. And please do not come to this office without calling to be sure we are open for visitors. If you would like to send comments to the council, request additional information, or learn about some of our education classes such as Project LEAK, you may do so by calling the Office of Support at 832-927-7926, by faxing to 713-572-3740, or you can send an email through our website, rwpchouston.org. On behalf of the Ryan White Planning Council, we thank you again for participating and have a good evening.